Ms. Hawley?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have the agenda approval. Counselor Greigle.
If there's no changes, I'll make the motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Not, start voting please. Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next, we have citizen comments. This is where we give citizens an opportunity to come up to the podium and make any comments. We do ask that you keep your comments within a three-minute limit. If you are still talking at three minutes, I will politely ask you to end your comments and have a seat.
I'm Ron Brink. I live in rural Alamosa County. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. I just want to congratulate you all on getting yourselves, for the lack of a better word, educated on the RWR water proposal that's in the northern part of the valley. I thought that that was, I read the article in the paper and I, I thought that was extremely good and I was so happy that you went to the real source and probably the most knowledgeable person in the valley, or one of the most knowledgeable person in the valley is Cleve Simpson to fill you in on the ins and outs of what's going on. This is extremely important, something that we have to really watch and be prepared for a fight, if that's what it takes. I mean, because as I've said a couple of times in different, to different organizations, to me, that is chapter one of the death of the San Luis Valley. Because one drop of water goes out of here that way. We'll never stop it and those people think, oh, 45,000 people, what are they, what's that, you know? We can't even half fill the Bronco Stadium, you know, if everybody went up there. And so to them, but if, if, if that's all, and you know, they want to push this $60 million fund, well, it should be maybe, that isn't near enough. I mean, to decimate an area of livelihood that we have here in the valley is just, is just criminal to me. And I was so glad and congratulate you all and I just thought that was a good venue that you did and you went to the right source. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink as well. Doesn't appear that I have any other cards, right, Hawley?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, up next, that's going to bring us to ceremonial items, a presentation of the 2018 Manager of the Year Award. Mr. Farron Hall, would you please come up and the representative, oh, Roy's coming up, okay?
Good evening, City Council, constituents and staff. This last month in February, Farron Hall was awarded the 2018 Manager of the Year through the Colorado Rural Water Association. And I want to stand here and give him this award and I have something I'd like to say about him. So before I give it to him, I'm going to say a little speech here about Farron. Farron's tenure with the City of Alamosa spans over 30 years of dedicated service. Farron started his career working in the trenches laying water and sewer pipe for the city. Through the dedication of improving himself, he has achieved the title of Utilities Superintendent for the City of Alamosa. Farron right now has a Class A certification in water treatment, Class C in wastewater treatment, Class III in wastewater collections, and a Class III in water distribution. Farron has overseen the construction and commissioning of Alamosa's first wastewater plant and water treatment facility, and to this day is involved in the day-to-day operations of both facilities. That's not to include oversight management on the collections and distribution system for the city. His management skills are impeccable. Farron strives to give the city and his employees the best product every day. He is proud of his certifications and strives to have the utilities department hold the highest certifications possible. His mentoring has produced a certified staff that has multiple operators certified in all disciplines. Not only does Farron strive to have his employees learn, but he himself has never stopped learning and excel himself to be the best manager he can be. He listens to employees, has compassion and caring for them and their families. If you've ever asked Farron for help, I doubt that he's ever told you no. He takes the same approach towards the city and its community. Farron has helped constituents in their utmost times of need to ensure they have running water and sewer to their households. During this time, Farron has not only dedicated his time to the City of Alamosa, but has given numerous hours of support to communities throughout the San Luis Valley. Farron's hard work ethics and dedications have made him an awesome person, a superb manager, and a great leader, not just to his employees, but to the entire valley. Farron will never take credit for his dedication to the City of Alamosa and its surrounding communities. He always gives credit to others, but we all know without him, his employees and the City of Alamosa would not be able to achieve what they do on a day-to-day basis. He's the true definition of what Colorado Rural, of the Colorado Rural Water Association slogan of helping others. So I want to give him a round of applause. And with that, I, I award you 2018 Manager of the Year through the Colorado Water Association, Farron. Congratulations. It's not about me, it's about him.
Somebody hasn't presented.
Yeah.
There we go.
That's not my award, huh?
I know.
Like I said, Roy kind of spread it on kind of thick.
I give speeches if you need.
You did good, Roy.
But, but that's fine, but like I said, I might be receiving the award, but it's only because of the staff and the people and support that I have from them. They are all quality people, the city is very fortunate to have them. Like I said, he's won awards, Daniel's won awards, all of us have. I said, and so for everything that we accomplish, it's as a group effort. And I need to thank them just as well as that. I'd like to thank the council, the present and the past, because they've always had the confidence in us and gave us what we needed in order to do what we needed to do. And so that even makes that award that much better. And so I say thank you to you and to my staff. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to have council say some comments, Mary, okay? All right. Counselor Hensley.
So I'll go ahead and start. Farron, without a doubt, you are a fantastic representative of Alamosa. You have such pride in our city and it shows just day-to-day everything you do. And like you say, it is, it's wonderful to have a great staff, but we need leaders like you and so thank you for all you do. I know as a citizen, let alone on City Council, I am super appreciative of everything you do for us as community members.
Thank you.
Farron, I also wanted to say thank you and congratulations. I agree with you, you have a great staff, but in my experience, a great staff also reflects a great leader. And so thank you for all you do, even from a constituent standpoint and a citizen standpoint. Anytime I reached out to you before, you were great and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Farron, anytime I talk to anyone in the community, they're like, Farron does such a great job, he's always helpful, he's always nice. And they say that about your entire team. And I just really wanted to say thank you for all that you're doing and you obviously love your team and I think they can, we can tell they really love you too. So thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
I just want to say thank you for your years of service. I mean, what, 35 years, did you say?
Not quite.
Well, good job, thank you.
Counselor Greigle.
Farron, through all the years that I've had an opportunity to work with you, I've seen your leadership and what you've done and the group that you put together and the things that Roy said are very, very true, you know? And I know that you don't like to wave that flag or nothing, but you, what you've done for this city and the valley is incredible. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Vehill.
My mic, oh, there it goes. Farron, just echo what everybody else said, thank you so much for your servant leadership. You can see it in your staff and I just appreciate you, thank you.
Farron, I also would like to thank you and tell you that you are what they call a true leader because you do lead by example. And then it's obvious that your team, they feed off of your encouragement as well. Look at Roy, he wrote a marvelous speech about you, I mean, that's impressive. But thank you so very much for everything that you do in the community. And I can tell you as a matter of fact as well, that every time I go through the city and people come up to me and they'll talk about the different issues or things we need to work on, they say, well, just ask Farron, just ask Farron. And I hear that over and over, kind of like Counselor Daniels mentioned, that everyone really respects what you do. And thank you for taking the time to not only talk with department heads and staff, but also the community members, that means a lot as well.
Thank you.
So congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone, up next is on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A, Counselor Vehill.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not, please start voting. Okay, Ms. Hawley?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have under regular business, okay? We have the Board of Commissions of Business Streets and Committee Appointments.
Okay. So I'll just read a little bit of background. During the Alamosa City Council work session on January 23rd, City Council discussed the idea of placing a half-cent dedicated street sales tax before voters this November. The proposed dedicated street sales tax would increase the city's ability to maintain city streets from approximately $500,000 to approximately 1.8 million annually. The proposed dedicated street tax would sunset after 10 years to ensure accountability and would be placed in a street trust fund for 100% transparency. City Council passed Resolution 3 on February 6th, which created the Citizens Street Advisory Committee. This committee is going to be composed of two representatives from each ward, two at-large representatives and two representatives from either businesses, employers, ACID, or the Chamber of Commerce. It is important that all of Alamosa is represented in these discussions and that priorities from all areas are included in the recommendation to City Council. This is not a standing committee and it will dissolve after November 2019. A total of 25 applications were received, of which 24 were qualifying applicants. And council interviewed these applicants last Wednesday, February 27th, and finished the remainder before this meeting on March 6th. So now council will appoint the ward members by way of a vote. According to a policy, appointment shall be made by ballot and shall only be effective when appointed by a majority of council present at a meeting for which a quorum has been declared. When appointing for two vacancies with three more candidates, each counselor shall vote for two candidates and the two candidates receiving the most votes and at least from a majority of the council present shall be appointed. Once ballots have been counted, council will affirm these votes by a voice motion ratifying the selection done by ballot. So I included the names of each applicant in each ward and the business applicant. So you guys are going to vote by wards first and then you can, you'll vote the business applicants and then after you vote those, you'll come back around and vote for your at-large candidates.
Yes.
And then also, due to the applicants applying not knowing when meetings will be met, staff discussed and decided it would be appropriate for council to choose an alternate person for each representative ward or area to serve on the committee should the initial appointee not be able to attend meetings at all.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to start with Ward 1.
Okay.
Take the ballot and pass it along.
Thank you.
Take them back.
Thank you, buddy. That would be really great, so.
So to, just wanted to give council a reminder that Dez has sent out an email, I believe, on Monday with some potential retreat ideas. So if you've not seen that email, if you could kind of look for it, we will most likely be having it at the Windsor. The Trenchera was not available. And I also think there will be a cost savings with that as well. So if you could look at your email and do that, that would be great. Just tell me if I need to. We also, we also wanted to let council know that Sonia had moved on to a different job and she was our sales tax clerk. And we were initially advertising for that position, but we have sometimes talked about if we wanted the state to collect our sales tax or not and what that would entail. So we figured with the vacancy, now would be a good time to evaluate that situation. So Judy's done a lot of legwork and contacted home role communities that used to use the state but don't, and some that currently use the state, and to find out what that would look like. It actually does not cost us anything. So we would look at saving not only the personnel cost, but the costs associated for our software. I also know that from a business perspective, we sometimes hear from businesses of why they can't do this online and if we do do, the state is kind of a one-stop shop, they they'll do all their taxes at one location. So it's something that with our preliminary information, that we're really leaning towards doing the state. If we do, it would not be effective until July on their fiscal year, but we're going to move in that direction and probably need to bring something back before council in regards to an agreement to be able to utilize them to collect our sales tax. So wanted to give you a heads up on that. Do I keep going? Okay. We had a community forum this Saturday in relationship to our lead efforts. It was actually initiated by the state and we had every partner who's touching lead at this point in time there to talk about it. It was very positive. It was also a great opportunity to talk about the expansion that we've had into Rio Grande County with Montavista and South Fork and they had representatives there as well. It's been very well received in those communities and that's really exciting. It was also nice to have a compliment from the state representatives in that they feel the City of Alamosa or the San Luis Valley is kind of the premier in regards to having the policies in place, having the system up and running and it's really operating very, very well. And so we took a little bit of pride in that, but it was obviously pride for the whole group and Center for Restorative Programs and everyone else that's brought this together. There's been a lot of chatter out there in regards to the meeting we had on our downtown design. Ruth always does an amazing job writing the articles and the article was very, very informative. I think some people maybe just read the headline and may think that we're jumping to changing to two ways. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we're not jumping to two ways, that's one of the options that the consultants were looking at. And something that they shared in the meeting prior to council was that their recommendation, since half of our residents are pretty set against that, that for the time being, we can make some of the other improvements, see really some big improvements there. And then in a few years, we can reassess and see if people are still interested in wanting it or if they're still resistant to it. So I just want to make sure no one thinks that next year, we're going to be changing the two ways. It's, it's something that we'll continue to look at, but it's not something that was going to be the immediate action that's recommended. Local Foods Local Places is continuing to work and have meetings. They had a meeting last week to encourage restaurateurs to have local food. It was a great opportunity for the food hub to show what you can purchase online. Both, they've got a website for businesses and so you can order in bulk and you can time it to match up with what you need from a menu perspective. But then there's also just from an average resident perspective, you can order online and what that looks like. I'll tell you, I was very, very surprised by what you're capable of getting. And because of their relationship with other food hubs and food co-ops, they're able to even get some things that are not necessarily here in the valley, but might be from Pueblo or some other areas like that. So there's a great selection for that. We'll probably do some promotion of that. Let me pause. And we'll pause for now. Okay, so here are the results. So for Ward 1, the two applicants you appointed are Pete McGee and Michael Mumper. Ward 2, Donald Canin and Eli Heredia. Ward 3 is Ron Lozier and John Adams. And Ward 4, Sandra Ortega. And you guys will have to vote again because there was a tie for the second appointee between Geraldine Cummings and Gloria Rivera. And for the business applicants, it'll be Charles Sanchez and Aaron Keck.
Okay. So do you want us to vote again right now on that one position?
That and.
Should I give them those back or?
Pete McGee and Michael was Ward, Ward.
Your Ward 4 is who, who got the tie in the second place.
So we need to vote for that one?
So I'm going to hand your Ward 4 ballots back.
Okay. Yes, sir. When you're doing this Ward 4 vote, vote for 2 again because that will, that will take care of the tie and then also of the alternate, no?
I don't want to alternate out, so should they just vote between those two?
Okay, all right, that'd be fine.
Can they just vote between each of them?
Yes.
So just vote between Geraldine Cummings and Gloria Rivera.
Okay, only either or, okay.
Oh, are you guys still voting?
Yeah, well, I need to just clarify something so we won't get mixed up from the voting too. I know some of you did a great job of writing down good notes of the winners, so who would like to repeat the winners in each ward, but be slow so, because I know we're going to have to vote for alternates and all that. I mean, not alternates, but at large after that.
So in Ward 1, Pete McGee and Michael Mumper. Ward 2, Donald Canin and Eli Heredia. Ward 3, Ron Lozier and John Adams. Ward 4, the first person is Sandy and then whatever the vote is.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vehill.
Then out of the business community, Charlie Sanchez and Aaron Keck.
Tell you a teacher, pay attention.
Okay, so your second appointee for Ward 4 is going to be Gloria Rivera. Okay, so I'm going to hand out your at-large ballots. I have every single name on here, so do not choose the people you just appointed.
I have every single name on here, so do not choose the people you just appointed.
So, I do have more announcements.
Sorry.
We do have the Boys and Girls Club Breakfast. The Youth of the Year is coming up next week, which is Tuesday, the 12th, at 7:00 a.m. Is that correct? Is that why you guys are here, to pass something out? See, you've missed, if you're late by four minutes, you miss your window.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
And also, as Erin is passing that out, I want to just thank you. We actually submitted for support from the city for the event, and really appreciate the fact that you guys are helping us do this. So I think it'll be a great opportunity for folks to really see the wonderful youth we have in the valley. Erin, help me, we're serving 150?
So we have, Eves is going to cater the breakfast, so you know it's going to be delicious. It's going to be those backdoor burritos with that green chili as an option to put on, it's going to be great. We have our Youth of the Year winner, so a secret, I can't tell you who it is, and the runner-up are both going to get up and talk a little bit. And it's always a great event. We'll have you in by 7:00 o'clock, while I'll be out by 7:50, so you can go and make your appointments and your job at 8:00 o'clock.
So thanks for your support, and we really hope to see you all there.
Thank you too, thank you.
Okay, so after your, counting your votes for at-large, majority voted Don Thompson as an at-large person, and you guys have a three-way tie between Vincent B. Rogers, Lori Smith, and Jerilyn Cummings. So I'm going to pass these back and vote between those three.
And we can say the names once you get it back in your hands again.
So those three again were Vincent Rogers, Lori Smith, and Jerilyn Cummings.
Um, so my last one, and I'm not, we'll figure out filler for the next few ones. The Valleywide is having their reception for their new CEO, which is Ms. Arnold, Arnoldi. And then they're also recognizing the contributions from Gigi Dericottis. And so that is this Thursday at 6:00 o'clock at their administrative building here on Market Street. So I know I plan to attend, and just wanted to make sure if council had some opening, that might be a good opportunity. Valleywide is actually one of the co-champions of our health sector partnership right now, and so...
So tomorrow night?
Yes, tomorrow, yes, that Thursday, tomorrow night. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something while we're waiting for the city manager? I wanted to thank you and the mayor for the effort in writing letters to J.C. Penney's and trying, any effort to try to get him to stay here, and I really appreciate the comments and stuff, and...
Thank you, council.
You know, that's a valuable, valuable store that we're losing, and anything that we can do, if anybody knows anybody up in management there, please contact them or something, you know, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grego, and I have to give credit to Heather and her staff for creating those talking points for me to be able to reach out to J.C. Penney's. Heather?
Um, so with your discretion, as we figure this out, but then also we have the alternate process to still do as well, we can, since there's no one else in the agenda, we can kind of do some of the agenda items a little different. And, and those types of things, are you guys ready though for this, before I go into another agenda item?
We are.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Because the majority of council has to vote for, we need four votes, so the, it came out 3-2-2, so we're going to have you vote between the two that got the two votes, and then you'll vote a third time, if that makes sense.
Which two?
You're going to vote right now between Lori Smith and Jerilyn Cummings.
So that way, we knock out one of the low ones, and then you vote between those remaining two.
We had to make that up on the fly.
So who are we voting for this time?
Okay, Mayor, if you're okay, I think one of the quicker ones might be the gift one, which is under City Manager Legal, First Reading of Ordinance Number 6, 2019, an ordinance amending section 2-38 related to the amount of permitted gifts.
Okay, please start.
Is that appropriate? Okay.
That's appropriate.
From a staff perspective, we look at this somewhat as housekeeping. We had originally set our gifts limit tied to the state, as in Article 29. Through the years, the state would maybe increase it a dollar or two, but we didn't really want to do that. But at this point in time, there is a bit of a difference between the $50 and the $65 that it is right now. And so we just feel it's appropriate to mirror the state, and at this point, to make the amendment to increase it up to 65.
Okay, Councilor Veho?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 6-2019 on first reading, and set it for a public hearing on March 20th at 7:00 p.m. or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Not? Start voting, please. Thank you, Heather.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay.
Okay, so back to your appointments. So now you're going to vote between Jerilyn and Vincent.
Okay.
No one yet. You're voting between Jerilyn and Vincent, and then whoever wins this round is the appointee.
Okay. Well, this is great.
Okay, so your second at-large appointee is going to be Jerilyn Cummings.
Okay, thank you.
So your last thing to vote on is going to be the alternate appointment, so just vote for one person from each ward and the business.
So we, we may need you to let us know slowly, these people in each ward that have been selected, so we can choose the right one as an alternate, okay?
Okay. I'll read you the names of who you appointed, and you can cross them off that sheet, and then you can make your vote. Okay, do y'all have your ballot? Okay, so you guys appointed in Ward 1 Pete McGee and Michael Mumper. In Ward 2, Donald Canin and Eli Heredia. In Ward 3, Ron Lozier and John Adams. Ward 4, Sandra Ortega and Gloria Rivera. Your business appointees are Charles Sanchez and Erin Keck, Keck. And your at-large appointees are Don Thompson and Jerilyn Cummings. That's okay, just vote for the other ones.
Okay, as we tabulate those, if council would like to address probably the next one, which would be the pay plan, which is under City Manager/Legal. It's First Reading of Ordinance Number 5-2019. It not only amends the pay plan, but it also sets forth that if we need future amendments, we can do it through a resolution and not an ordinance, which is similar to how we do our budget adjustments as well. In my opinion, from the pay plan, there's four changes, two of which are pure housekeeping and two of which are not housekeeping. So the first one is, which is housekeeping, our account clerk 2 was mistakenly listed in grade nine when it shouldn't have been in grade eight. This is not impacting anyone's pay, it was a typo, so we just feel it needs to be put in the right location.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I'll continue in one second. That's not all of it, I'm sorry. The other housekeeping item is the ICE monitor out of Parks and Rec. We mistakenly listed it in grade six, but really, it should have been listed under the pay plan for non-regular part-time employees. The two items that are not housekeeping, the first one is the placement of the Economic Development Director in grade 12 per council direction. And the other item, which is the first time you are seeing it, with our administrative assistant and then bringing on Eric's position, serving as the prosecutor and the support for that position, we did need to update her job description, and there are several job duties that are new to that position that would warrant a reclassification for that to go from grade five to grade eight. When we get to the budget amendment, you'll notice that that fiscal impact is about a $9,000 fiscal impact, but it's something that, to appropriately pay that employee for the duties that, that she is performing.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Councilor Veho? Okay, it's time to bring this to a vote. Counselor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 5-2019 on first reading and set it for a public hearing for March 20th at 7:00 p.m. or as soon as thereafter as can be heard.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Counselor Grego, oh, no, ready? Okay, start voting, please. Ms. Holland?
And I'm sorry, who did the motion in the second? I was supposed to do that. Thank you. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Heather. Okay.
And they're almost done, so we are going to wait for the budget amendment, since there's a few items to cover there.
Okay. I want to thank you all for maximizing our time and being efficient.
I do, I, I saw Sam out there. They also had coffee with a cop this last weekend, and I think there was a great turnout, and it was a regional collaboration with Crime Stoppers as well. So just wanted to thank Sam and his crew for that.
That is awesome.
Okay. All right, so we need you to vote in Ward 2 again between Lucy Adams and Lori Smith.
Mm-hmm, we are.
Okay. Okay, so here's your alternates. In Ward One, it's gonna be Rob Oringdahl. Ward Two Lucy Adams. None for Ward Three, because we only had three applicants there. Ward Four is gonna be Kashell Langford. And your business applicant alternate is Jason Martinez.
Okay, thank you very much.
And now I need you guys to make a motion on those.
Okay. Counselor Veho. Counselor Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve all applicants for the Streets Committee for whom we have voted on tonight.
Okay.
Those people being, should I name them?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add something.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody who threw their name in the hat, and I think I speak for all of us up here. It really is awesome to have so many people who care about our community and we just appreciate that. And we enjoyed talking to each and every one of them.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel.
I'm gonna jump in. We have to have you guys vote for an at-large alternate.
For who?
An at-large alternate. So you could choose anybody. Oh, actually, choose between Lori Smith and David Myes. Lori Smith, David Myes, and Jennifer Carr, actually.
Okay, Counselor Gregel, continue, please. And then Counsel Carson, you're next.
I was just gonna add to Liz's comments that we should send some kind of letter thanking those people that didn't get appointed. Some kind of recognition, just a letter thanking them.
Counsel Carson.
I wanted to echo my thanks as well, but I also wanted to thank staff and city council for getting through this process quickly. I know it was kind of a beast to get all these interviews done. Thank you, guys. I think we, again, I'll echo that we make a great team and through some of these, some of these more difficult tasks, I think we shine.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Counsel Carson. If you can turn that mic off for us real quick. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any other comment?
I, I too would like to thank all of the applicants. There were twenty-four applicants applying for twelve open slots. That's amazing community input and feedback into this process. I also would like to thank our council members and Holly and, and staff for making this process go by smoothly. We did this in two sessions and you all came in very early on both of the sessions and then you had other meetings to follow. I really commend you for doing that and working together as a team to make this a success, a successful committee evaluation. So thank you all very much. And start voting.
I'm just gonna let you know that your alternate is Lori Smith for an at-large.
Thank you.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, Counselor Veho.
Mayor, if I may, just a few words on this process and, and the work that we've done the last two weeks. Thank you to the council and to staff for doing it. And just, it, it just shows, I hope we are showing the community how much we want this and how much we need the community to buy into this program. And because we want community buy-in so much, we've given the community a chance to say what streets need to be done. So again, for all of us up here, I think it's very imperative that we all communicate that to our constituents that if we all buy into this, we can get this done and makes Alamosa a better place as far as our roads are concerned.
Thank you, Counsel Veho. Really appreciate that. Okay, up next on the agenda, finance.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the last items on the agenda is our first budget amendment and Judy's here to review that.
Good evening, Council Mayor. I might just like to go over the all of these. I'd like to say first that all of these items have been previously approved by you at earlier meetings with the exception of the City Manager job change for Desiree to add to Eric's, because she does a lot of help for Eric now. So that's the only one that hasn't been previously approved. So I'm just gonna start. I'm using the council communication as my format, so if you want to follow along. I'm not, I probably won't go into great detail, but please stop me if you have any questions. The transfers in are money that we have in reserves that the different departments put in reserve to use when they need them. So there was a need determined that they needed new radios, because the radios in the PD cars, I guess some of them were pretty bad. So they, they transferred money to sixty-three thousand three hundred out of reserves into the general fund. When we sold the fire truck to the Sanford Fire Department, apparently before we sold it, between the time we sold it and the time they picked it up, I don't know what happened to it, but it required about sixty-five hundred dollars in repairs. So although Don didn't ask them to pay us, they gave us the sixty-five hundred dollars to cover the cost of the repairs, so that that was really nice. The forty-one six ninety-seven is support from economic development partners that already agreed to these funds to give to the ACID for that partner that's now gonna be under our roof. And then Holly was able to successfully get a grant for eighteen hundred dollars to help with the costs of, that the city has to pay for the Defense Council. The twenty thousand, I'll go on to the expenses for the general fund. The software is for in-house prosecutor software that will help to make their work more efficient. And then the MDT for patrol cars, that's the money that was transferred in from reserve. And that goes into IT, because anything related to IT, computer, IT software, anything IT pays for it, because they have the expertise to pick what's best for that. So that's why it always comes out of IT's budget. The water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, they started the project in eighteen, but it was not completed and they still have about thirty-three thousand dollars worth of work to complete that. And that was the upgrade to the SCADA systems. Then the brains, actually, for the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. The legal assistant, that is Desiree's position, and that's to cover her additional duties. And then the eighteen hundred dollars that Holly got will spend on the Defense Council. Thirty-five thousand is to replace the radios in the PD cars. The council agreed to give three thousand dollars to the, for the Veterans Memorial, so that's what that, that came from the fund balance. And if you look in the budget, in the non-departmental part of the budget, there's a line item for economic development. So what we did is we took the balance that was left in that line item and transferred it to the new Economic Development Department, because we created a whole new department for that area. So the, the budget remaining there, we just reallocated. And the Artscape program is monies that was left from two thousand and eighteen that we wanted to roll forward to be able to use in the, for the two hundred, two thousand nineteen budget. The transfer, Don wanted to transfer that sixty-five hundred dollars from, that we got from the Sanford Fire Department into his reserve to go towards the purchase of the new fire truck in two thousand and twenty-two. The economic development is the new, that's the budget for the new department. The, the equipment, it was a, they needed a new lift apparently for, to inflate, that they use to lift the vehicles up so they can go underneath. Yes, sir?
Can I get you to pause right there, Counsel Veho has a question.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, a question on the economic development piece. The transfer of twenty-eight thousand two hundred, will that be added to the seventy-six thousand?
No, sir, it's included.
It's in there?
Yeah, it's in there. It's just we just moved it from one department to the other.
Thank you.
That line item also, though, is gonna be kept. We're gonna rename it into, I believe, like economic initiatives. So that twenty-eight was earmarked for some other items like the facade grant, those types of things. So it's still gonna be earmarked for that. It just made sense to come out of the new department budget.
Okay, and the enterprise fund, we don't have any additional revenues there. The complete, completion of the Outfall project, they started it in eighteen, but they weren't able to finish it until January of nineteen. So the whole budget was done in eighteen and then we, the three forty-four six oh seven is what was remaining to be completed in nineteen, but it was already previously budgeted. The operating machine is a dozer. Also, we thought we were gonna get it in December, but as fate would have it, it didn't get here until January. So we moved it to January. The capital reserve is, again, the fire truck. The expense, we transferred the twenty-eight thousand three hundred from reserve to purchase the PD MDTs. The reason the other amount is not transferred from capital reserve is because it was already in a line item to be transferred out in the PD. So instead of transferring it to reserve, we just transferred it up to IT. And the community rec, Andy got a grant from the Tree Board, or Tree Coalition, I'm sorry, for fifteen hundred dollars to plant trees and do landscape at the new Ice Rink multipurpose building. That's, so that's also the expense. And then the lease proceeds for, that is for the watering system that council approved at the golf course. And although council did approve up to eight hundred thousand, our thinking was that we, we are hoping it may not be that much. So once we get the final price, then we'll do a budget amendment to, just to, for what we need, instead of doing the whole eight hundred thousand and not needing it. And then that's what the five hundred thousand dollars going out is for. Does anyone have any questions, comments?
Counsel Gregel.
Explain to me again, all this stuff that's coming out of fund balance, we, we had already approved it?
Yes, sir. And so if you want, I, I don't have all the dates in here, but all of these items, other than the position for the reclassification, had come before council, or they were projects in two thousand and eighteen that carried over into two thousand and nineteen.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Veho.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number Five dash twenty nineteen amending our twenty nineteen, our twenty nineteen budget, also known as the first budget amendment.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you so much for this report.
Thank you.
Start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, thanks to you being so thorough. It looks like we're at the committee reports. Okay, all right, good deal. Committee reports. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Alamosa Housing Authority last week and they have just lots of projects going. They're really working on beautifying their areas. I'm always really impressed with them and their energy when they, when they come on board. So they are also looking at, they're gonna reach out to our Public Works Department for some of the projects that we have scheduled for this summer about the, some of the, like gutter things that they've already done. And so they're really looking forward to having some of those conversations with our team. And so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counsel Brawls.
I attended Senior Citizens Meeting and they're doing well and they're planning their tour for all senior citizens to go to Las Vegas. So I think anybody that's interested in that tour can sign up, senior citizens.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counsel Brawls. Okay, so doesn't look like we have any more committee reports. We've done staff announcements. Now we're gonna go to council comments. Counsel Veho.
Thank you, Mayor. You know me, I always, I always like to highlight our high school teams in the Valley and that. Want to give a shout out to our Alamosa wrestling team. Two weeks ago, they won the state championship again. They've got a little dynasty going on here. So congratulations to those guys. And then tomorrow starts state basketball. Alamosa girls are there. That's the first time they've been there since oh-six, oh-seven. So congratulations to them. The Sangre de Cristo boys and girls are there. They're playing in Pueblo. The Sanford girls are also there. Also, Del Norte boy, Del Norte girls are there as well. So our Valley is well represented up at the state level.
Thank you for that update, Counsel Veho. Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just kinda wanted to echo what Heather said about the lead meeting over the weekend. It was, I think, very well attended. I think the people from the state were impressed with our community. And the partnerships that you can tell are happening through this program are just tangible in the room. And so it was really nice to be able to see all of the work and all of the belief our Valley communities have in this program. And so I thought it was just a really amazing meeting.
Good. Thank you, Counsel Daniel. Counselor Carson.
Last week, a couple, another counselor and some staff went, we went to the CML Legislative Update in Denver. And I just wanted to say that in listening to everything that other communities around the state are doing and getting all these updates that we did, I will say that Alamosa is at the forefront of almost everything that everyone else in the state's doing. We, we're on top of things. Our staff does excellent in keeping apprised of these changes at the state level, what's going on and what's gonna directly affect us. And again, in, in listening to all this, we're, we're at the forefront. We're doing things that a lot of communities aren't doing, that they're striving to do. And I was very impressed. So thank you, guys, again.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. It's very good to hear. Okay, all righty. So I, I just would like to say, I would like to thank council and staff for the work sessions we had last week. Very informative with the downtown group as well as Cleve coming in and giving us updates on the water issues. I think those were two very crucial, productive work sessions we had. Okay, if not, council, no other comments, no executive session?